Okay, and I call the Planning Commission meeting to order Thursday, September 23rd. Roll call?
Commissioner Donaldson.
Here.
Commissioner Coomerly.
Here.
Commissioner Hoff has an excused absence this evening. Commissioner Sherman.
Here.
Commissioner Steinberg.
Present.
Vice Chair Cardoza.
Here.
Here.
Chair Flores.
Here.
Six Commissioners are present.
People used to call me Buzz. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We don't have to. The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any comments?
I'd just like to make one correction at my final comment. Commissioner's comment. Instead of "there's exposed stuff on the roof," there's "exposed plumbing and ductwork on the roof."
You didn't say "stuff."
I was just going from my notes. Plumbing and ductwork.
Yeah, I have a correction on the page three of six on my comments for the IKEA matter. I would really like the minutes to reflect that I said that after reviewing all of the information presented, that I could not make a finding that it was a secondary use and I could not find that it was a compatible use and that the future uncertainties made that even more clear.
Do you have that written down? I couldn't write that fast.
Okay, I'll give it to you.
Okay. Any other comments? Any motion for the approval?
I move approval with the corrections.
Second.
So, move by Donaldson. Vanessa seconded.
Is that without exception?
Charlie, Director's Report.
Can we go back to public comments, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm new at this. Would anybody from the public like to comment on items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments. Sorry, thank you, Charlie.
Okay.
Now, Director's Report.
All right. Well, first of all, as I'm sure you've probably heard, the IKEA warehouse project that was approved at your last meeting has been appealed to the City Council by the neighbors. At last Tuesday's City Council meeting, they set the hearing date for the appeal for October 19th. Under the provisions of the zoning ordinance, the Commission does have the right to send a representative to that appeal hearing if you wish to do so. So, that's it.
I plan to attend that meeting that night anyway, so, but you're all welcome to come.
And I would note that our staff report on the appeal does note the Commission vote and which Commissioners voted which way. In other City Council and Redevelopment Agency actions, at their September 7th meeting, they had a report from Weber Smith on the parking policy study that they've been working on. They agreed with the staff recommendation on that to review the costs of implementation as part of the capital improvement program and to defer implementation until the economy improves. They also referred it to the Transportation Committee for their review. The Redevelopment Agency had an update on the process of selecting an architect for the Center for the Arts, which will include a design competition. The architect selection is expected by the end of this year. The Agency, the Redevelopment Agency reviewed the I-80 pedestrian bicycle bridge that you had a study session on in the wee hours of the morning at your last meeting, and the Agency unanimously agreed with the Bridge Committee and the Planning Commission's recommendation for the concrete box girder bridge type. The ordinance that you approved at your July meeting on the demolition of residential structures was approved on first reading on September 7th and passed on September 21st. The vote on that was four to one, with Councilmember West dissenting. Also, on September 7th, the City Council had a discussion about the impromptu skateboard park that has been built under the maze over on Wood Street in West Oakland and agreed to try to help support that venture. On September 21st, the Council agreed to have the mayor sign a letter supporting its inclusion in the Gateway Park, which is being planned at the east end of the Bay Bridge. On September 21st, the Redevelopment Agency approved an investigation into the feasibility of funding 100% affordable housing, family housing, which was recommended by the Housing Committee, and they also saw a PowerPoint presentation by MIG on the attributes of family-friendly housing. Concerning the Doyle-Hollis-North area, which you reviewed at your last meeting, that's a general plan amendment and interim zoning regulations amendment. The Council passed the resolution amending the general plan and introduced the ordinance amending the interim zoning regulations for that area, which is between 62nd, Hollis, 64th, and Doyle, and the ordinance will be coming back to the Council's next meeting on October 5th for final passage. The Council also held a discussion on their policy about refunding appeal fees and decided that appeal fees from now on will not be refundable. And finally, the Council appointed members to a mobile food truck task force, which includes mobile food truck vendors, restaurant owners, and residents. This task force will be reviewing the city's rules and regulations regarding mobile food vendors. Concerning the zoning update, staff is continuing to work diligently on that, which includes a new zoning map, a list of new zones, a list of new use classifications, a matrix indicating which uses are permitted or conditionally permitted in each zone, the administrative procedures, and the other provisions that are part of the zoning ordinance. The next meeting of the Zoning Update Steering Committee will be on December 14th, at which a status report on this ongoing activity will be presented. I would note that our staff, pretty much the entire Planning Division staff, is meeting at a minimum of once a week for two hours, sometimes more than that, to try to slog through this and get a new zoning ordinance completed. Your retreat, as you know, is scheduled for next Saturday, October 9th, from, not next Saturday, I'm sorry, Saturday, October 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That's two weeks from this coming Saturday. We would like you to please plan to gather at the Doyle-Hollis Park at 8:30 in the morning so that the bus can leave promptly at 9:00 o'clock. This is a public meeting, so all interested parties are welcome to attend, to the extent that there's room on the bus, and we've never had a problem with that in the past. We are developing the itinerary and the details, and we will email this information to you within the next couple of weeks. Finally, I just wanted to let you know about a couple of other Saturday events that are coming up related to the pedestrian bicycle plan. There are two so-called audit tours that will be happening on Saturdays following the Planning Commission retreat. The first is on Saturday, October 16th, and that will be a bicycle tour of the city. And the second is on Saturday, October 23rd, which will be a walking tour of the city. Both will start and end here at City Hall. The walking tour will include Emery Go-Round transportation between the various walking sites. The starting and the ending times and the other details are being finalized now, so I don't have that information for you, but that will be announced in the near future. So, that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Sounds like fun. Any questions for staff or Charlie in particular? Okay, we have two public hearings tonight, Black Diamond Cafe and the 64th and Christie Residential Building, so Arlene Cassidy will be presenting the first item.
And I will be recusing myself from both items.
And why?
Because I live across the street.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Good evening, Chair Flores, Commissioners. Tonight, I'm presenting the conditional use permit application for on-premise liquor sales at the Black Diamond Cafe. Just a point of clarity, the cafe is a list, a use that's listed as a permitted use in the Avenue 64 conditional use permit, so we're not reviewing that use. We are reviewing the on-premise liquor sales aspect to the cafe. Avenue 64 is just north of the Pacific Park Plaza Project. The cafe is located in the southeast corner of the project along Christie. The cafe space is about 1,300 square feet. It has two entrances, both facing onto a private sidewalk to the south, but has windows onto Christie Avenue, shared restrooms with the adjacent tenant space. Here are pictures of the existing building. This is the private sidewalk facing west along the project, the front door here, and the unfinished space. Now, the construction on the space has already commenced, and I believe they're opening soon. As I said, the cafe space, the use there, is permitted under the existing CUP. We're reviewing the on-premise liquor sales. They're proposing just for beer and wine sales here. On-premise liquor sales requires a CUP in the mixed-use residential zone. No setbacks are required. The parking is taken care of by the existing CUP. No off-site, or, excuse me, off-street parking is required for this space. There's also no bike parking required for this space, however, staff recommends an additional rack near the front door. The operating characteristics of the cafe are 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, 7:00 to 7:00 on Sunday. They're proposing to serve sandwiches, pastries, espresso, and of course, beer and wine. Four employees, again, 1,372 square feet, and the plan that they submitted has seating for 44 people. They don't plan on having any live entertainment at this time, however, they are aware that a cabaret license is required, and should they pursue that in the future, they plan to contact the nearby residences and property owner to facilitate that. Staff recommends approval of this conditional use permit, subject to the conditions of approval attached. These also include, of course, a beer and wine only for the alcohol sales. The cabaret license be obtained should they have any live entertainment. A finding of convenience and necessity from the City Council needs to be obtained if ABC, the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, I believe, will determine if that's required, and of course, the bicycle parking near the front door. This concludes my presentation, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Arlene. Any questions for staff?
This is a new cafe.
Yes, it is.
On page four, it says "an existing cafe on Hollis," so I assume that's a mistake.
I, yes, it is. I apologize for that.
That's a cut-and-paste error.
Yes.
And could the applicant also extend the use onto the sidewalk to create a real cafe feel?
Yes, this came up in our DCC Development Corning Committee meeting. The Christie Avenue sidewalk is a public sidewalk, but the sidewalk in the pictures that I showed to the south is a private sidewalk. So, this area here is private, and this is a view of it here. So, should the applicant want to have outdoor seating on the private sidewalk, no sidewalk cafe permit would be required. Should they want to have the seating on the Christie side, a sidewalk cafe permit would be required. If the applicant is interested in this outdoor seating, we've requested that they coordinate with building before pursuing that.
That would be highly suggested because it's becoming an energetic area, especially with the next case coming up, and the comeback cafe up the street has some outdoor seating. So, it's creating a little neighborhood, which is really nice, inviting. I would definitely support that. Thank you.
Any more questions for Arlene? Is the applicant here to make a presentation?
Yeah.
Or to introduce themselves and not have to make a presentation.
I'll introduce myself. My name is Dave Ung. I believe my name's spelled a little bit wrong because probably my writing.
It's my.
That's okay. It's not Ling.
How do you spell it?
U-N-G.
U-N-G, okay.
Right, probably my writing that are a little bit quick, but I reside in San Leandro, and I've been, I actually used to live by Emeryville, live on the border of Oakland here. I grew up here, and my wife, just, we just got off work and decided to be here and be here and listen to the planning, so I'm glad to be here.
Great.
And this is our first project, by the way. My background, I grew up in a family where we built bakeries, small family bakeries, and this is a small family business that we want to start, and this spot always seemed to be part of our families in term of where people live and enjoy their lives and whatnot, so, and this is what we came up to.
That's great.
What's your timeline look like?
Right now, we've been, we submit our plan to the Health Department, it's been approved, and we've been in a revision a few times, so I believe it's been approved. We just have to pick up the permit maybe, I just dropped out the final plan today to the Health Department, just to get revisions, and once that's done, hopefully next week, we'll, we got contractor to come on board and that will be in the project, and hopefully we'll get construction going fairly soon. So, we look at maybe, hopefully before Christmas, but never know when it comes to constructions.
So, you've been moving along with your plans, and the beer and wine idea kind of came along, or was that always part of the plan?
That's always part of the plan because we, what our plan was, my wife and I sit down, we didn't want just to be another coffee shop, so-and-so. We don't want to just serve coffee. We want where there's a lot of families that live in that building, and there's a lot of people work in that area. So, we figure we have food as well because there's, when people come into your establishment, they want to sit down and enjoy themselves, not just coffee, so we figure food, beer and wine, that's the most we want to have because we don't want any people over extended into alcohol and get drunk and whatnot. So, that's always part of the plan.
Does anybody else have any questions? Are you going to be preparing food there, frying and?
Yes, we are. We're going to have light food, unfortunately, because we're not, the building's not equipped for heavy cooking, I would say, like burger cookings, because exhaust, so we just have light baking and cold-maked sandwiches and stuff.
Okay. Well, thank you. Welcome to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you for opening up a business over there.
Thanks.
I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anybody like to speak on this? You have two minutes, and please sign into, to your right. We're just going to give him two. Two minutes.
Oh, boy, I'll talk really fast. So, this is just a suggestion, not a condition or anything, but this corner is really becoming a transit kind of mini hub, and it might be really helpful, both for the business and for, to encourage transit, to work with the TMA to possibly get a next bus display put in possibly the window or someplace inside the restaurant that people could see it from the street or from inside the restaurant, and I think that would be great to support both things.
Could you explain what the next bus is?
Next bus is, I think they've got displays, like at the Emery Station East, I know it's got one, and it's a little LED display that says when the next Emery Go-Round bus will be arriving.
This is AC or?
Just for the Emery Go-Round, yeah.
They have them on, I haven't seen any in Oak, in Emeryville, but they have them in Oakland on Telegraph Avenue for the Rapid Bus at the major stops.
Does the Emery Go-Round provide that for people, or do you have to?
I don't know how that works, but it would be something to investigate, I think.
Okay, well, maybe the applicant could look into that. It could be helpful, but well, I'm not sure. We'll see how the Commission feels about it. Would anybody else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
I had one quick question, if possible, for the staff. A sign is going to be separately submitted?
Yes. Yes, the sign will be separately submitted.
And that would be a staff-level approval.
And the name is Black?
Black Diamond Cafe.
Black Diamond Cafe. It's a big sign. So, do you have any design intention of putting it on the overhang?
You'd have to come up to the mic and speak. Thanks.
We currently have an architect that we hire that are designing the sign, so we work with them closely right now in the logos and whatnot. We understand because Black Diamond's very long, so we have the design in a format where we'll fit and not creating such a long sign, so we currently work on that.
If it's within the sign parameters of the, of the, for the building sign program, it only stays, it stays at a staff level, so it wouldn't come to us unless it was larger than that, right?
Are we talking non-illuminated, Charlie?
I don't know. Haven't seen it.
Any restrictions on that?
No.
Okay.
Any more questions or comments?
Chair Flores?
Yes.
Before you vote on this, I'd like to note that the typographical error that Commissioner Steinberg pointed out is actually in the resolution. It's in the first finding in the resolution, so I'd like to suggest that that be reworded to say "a proposed cafe on Christie Avenue" rather than "an existing cafe on Hollis Street."
And it shows up again on paragraph four of the resolution. It calls it "an existing cafe."
Oh, okay. Well, like, okay, that's fine. A proposed cafe.
With those corrections, I would move approval.
Second? Motion by Gail Donaldson, second by Stephen Steinberg. Call the questions.
Commissioner Donaldson.
Aye.
Commissioner Coomerly.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberg.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cardoza.
Aye.
And Chair Flores.
Aye.
Five ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the City Council within 15 days.
Congratulations and good luck with your business. Next item did not have to wait till 12 o'clock at night. 64th and Christie, I believe Marou Desai will be making the presentation.
I have to recuse myself, and so does Commissioner Sherman.
Luckily, we still have a quorum of four Commissioners.
That's right.
Good evening, Chair Flores, Commission members. This is a final development plan, or FDP, for the 64th Christie Residential Building. You have seen this at least two times in the study session format, so I'm going to breeze through a lot of it, as I know that the applicant will be focusing on certain items, and I'm not going to, for the interest of, so that we don't duplicate each other, I'm not going to go through what he's going to be going through. So, this is the first building in the Phase One of the Marketplace Plan Unit Development. What you are seeing is the entire, the Marketplace BUD in full, all the three phases are included here. This is kind of the one, this is the first phase. The first phase consists of two buildings, and this is the first of the two buildings, and that's indicated in the red. And this is the, a building in question when you see the full development of this plan. This is kind of the rendering that was approved as part of the BUD, and it's more for illustrative purposes. So, like I said, this is FDP for a 190-unit, five-story residential rental building over a garage podium. Just to quickly go through the basic format, the end, it's a two-level parking with four stories of residential units. The entry to the vehicle, the garage, is on the 64th Street, and the three sides are developed by townhomes, two-unit townhomes. These two corners are, this is the lobby and the leasing space, and this corner would be the fitness room. A typical flow plan of the, it looks something like this. It's 100, like I said, 190-unit mix, and what you see above is kind of the mix of different unit types. So, you have studios, you have one-bedroom, you have one-bedroom townhomes, lofts, and there are some two-bedrooms, and a few three-bedrooms. The amenities in this facility include a recreation room on the second level as well as fitness rooms. The podium level includes a garden with benches and other recreational facilities. This is the building section. The height is 67.7, and I'd like to bring your attention to a correction in your staff report. The height there was, I believe it was noted as 62.8, and that is not correct. The highest point which of the building would be at 67.7, so I would like to state for the record that this be corrected in staff report. It occurs in two or three places, as well as in the resolution, and also in the condition of approval. These are the elevations, Christie Avenue, 64th Street. This is the south elevation and the east. These are the renderings at the corner of Christie and 63rd Street, and this would be the lobby, the leasing space. This is the corner of 64th and Christie, and this is where the fitness room would be, and as the applicant will probably go into further details, this is the corner which is the main difference between what you saw at the last time. And this is the east elevation. And in terms of conformity to general plan and consistency with approved BUD, the general plan designation is mixed-use with residential, and the zoning for this is BUD mixed-use. What was approved as part of the BUD for this site was 185 units with the height of the building to reach no more than 85 feet and about, little less than 300 parking spaces. The proposal is a shorter building with 190 units and 200 parking spaces. What the finding that you need to make in order to approve this project is that the proposal is in general conformance with the BUD that was approved. We believe that it is. What is not included is the 6,000 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor that was originally approved. I'd like to draw your attention to some of the conditions of approval. These have been outlined in the staff report as well. The applicant and the staff have been working pretty diligently over the various designs, and as a result of the time, there are few inconsistencies in the plans, and because of that, we have included a condition of approval which states that the exterior renderings that I just showed you would govern whenever there are inconsistencies. There are some other design conditions which, and these are just a handful. One is to replace horizontal composite siding with metal. Just so that you know, the applicant is not in agreement with this condition, so you'd be hearing more about this. And there are other conditions, such as a smooth finish for the stucco siding and details regarding the balcony railings, and all these other conditions applicant and staff have achieved agreement. At this point, I would like to draw your attention to the memo, which is on your dais. These are certain minor changes to the conditions of approval, and these changes have been discussed with the applicant, and the applicant is satisfied with it. I would also like to-
The exception of the one about the composite siding.
Yes, except for the-
Which is item B, right?
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay.
At your dais, we also have the conditions of approval again printed out for you, which includes, includes some of the changes that are described here. I believe the packet has two sets of conditions of approvals. I'm not sure what happened, but we just printed these out, and these is, this is what should have been in the packet. That concludes my presentation. The FDP has to be approved by the City Council, so the action that is in front of you is a recommendation to the Council, and we are recommending that, you recommend to the City Council to approve this FDP, subject to conditions of approval.
Thank you, Marou.
That concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, otherwise, the applicant is here to make a fairly extensive discussion. Just so that you know, they will also be talking in detail about the landscaping, which I did not include in my presentation.
Any questions for staff?
I have one. If you had known that there would be no commercial retail associated with this project, would you still have gone for a BUD designation?
Yes, because the BUD, as I showed you in my earlier, consists of several buildings. This is the full BUD at build-out, at full build-out, and all these buildings are a combination of residential, office, and retail. So, you know, so each building is different in characteristic. This building is primarily residential with some commercial, whereas, for example, this building is office, whereas this building is more commercial and some residential. So, we looked at this, when we looked at the BUD, we looked at it as a whole, and this was what was proposed, and to that extent, this is a mixed-use. It's not so much that each building necessarily needs to be mixed-use.
So, the current proposal is not mixed-use?
Current proposal is not. It's not, does not include the commercial that was originally conceived at the time of BUD approval.
And was that done through negotiations with the city? Because I'm new on the block, so I don't know the history of that.
About the commercial not being included?
Yeah.
This is what is proposed in front of you, and we are, we believe- This is what is proposed in front of you, and we are, we, we believe that ultimately at build-out, the kind of mix that we were looking for, for the entire PUD, would be maintained. And, and that's what, that's the finding that needs to be made here, that this FDP is in general conformance with the original PUD. It does not need to be, the finding does not say that each building has to be exactly the way it was approved at this length.
I would note that when the PUD was approved, there is some flexibility as to what can be in each building. Also, the mixed-use designation in the general plan, and in the mixed-use zones in the interim zoning regulations, does not necessarily envision that every building has a mix of uses, but there, that there is a mix of use in the, in the area. It could be different buildings with different uses. If you look, as Maru said, if you look at the PUD as a whole, even if you only look at what is currently there with this new building, there's a movie theater next door, and then the existing marketplace buildings have retail, food vendors, a Borders bookstore, and an office tower. So, there is actually no residential in the marketplace complex at the present time, so this will add another use that is not currently there. So, in, in that sense, it will increase the mix of uses. I would also note that the, the space on the ground floor, that's the designated for the fitness room and the leasing amenities space, in the future, if things change, those could become retail spaces.
Yeah, that's a, that would just be a conditional, conditional use that actually could stay at staff level, because it's already-
I think so. We'll have to assess it when, if, if and when the time ever comes.
Sure.
But, yeah.
I mean, to me, it, it was, it's a market decision that, yeah, looks at the whole PCD at the same time.
So, that's not being proposed right now? The applicant hasn't even suggested that, but it just looks like there is some space on the ground floor that could potentially be retail in the future.
And the bus, the existing bus stop along Christie is remaining, but we're not requiring a bus bay?
Oh, that's correct.
Any reason why?
I'm not sure. This has not come up before.
The bus situation there seems to continually evolve, and actually, this has been, I'm not sure, I believe the line now is the 31. It used to be the 57. And the bus would lay over there, but it would just sit at the curb. By a bus bay, you mean a pullout? I think there hasn't really been a need for that. They just park, you know, in the parking lane.
Yeah, there, there was one there today, just, just idling, as you said, and that's a very prominent location in the building. So, typically, I've seen a bus bay that has similar materials and palette as the building that's proposed, but I'm not sure whose jurisdiction that would be.
Well, those kinds of things can be tweaked in the future, since it's on the public right-of-way. If that wanted to, if, if the city applicant wanted to change that in the future, it would probably go to the Transportation Committee, and then to the City Council.
Well, plan looks like it all becomes parking with a kind of a pullout, so.
Right, it is shown as parking on this plan, but-
I can imagine those spaces are going to be open once we got 200 units there.
As I say, that, that's public right-of-way, so that can be changed in the future by the city.
Any more questions for staff? The applicant like to make a presentation?
I'm just going to briefly introduce our design team. My name is Denise Pingston. I'm with TMG Partners in San Francisco. We're a Bay Area-based real estate development company, and we're very pleased to bring this building back to you, hopefully for approval this evening as a final design review, and then to take it on to the City Council for their October meeting, along with an owner participation agreement and a development agreement. So, the whole package will go to the City Council. And the whole package, as these things often go, is greater than even just the building you're seeing tonight, which we're very excited about. I think I mentioned at the last meeting, this, the overall marketplace redevelopment has been selected as a state catalyst project. It's been honored by the state as one of four gold-level-recognized projects statewide for exemplifying green building and the provision of affordable housing in infill locations, which are inherently more green than, than greenfield development. And of course, part of the catalyst designation is that we actually get the thing built now and catalyze some economic recovery, along with exemplifying green building. So, one of, you commissioners, Commissioner Coomerly suggested that, it's great that this building is green, but it doesn't look very green, was one of the remarks she made when we last spoke, which really resonated. Here's this great example, statewide example of doing something good in, in a very difficult time, and really, you should be able to tell by walking by the building. So, well, part of what you'll see tonight is that we took that comment really to heart. And now, when you see that building, when it's completed, you'll be able to tell. All of the accolades that it's won before it ever started construction, just by walking down the street and sidewalk. We've added green walls, we've added art that is in effect landscaping, planted art. We've added art along the street frontage through sidewalk etchings and other sculptural materials that really enrich the pedestrian realm and help create education about what green building and bringing back the nature into cities is all about. So, thank you very much for that inspiring round of dialogue, because I, I think it really made the building much better. I want to let you know that we also put out tonight, I think for you, an errata sheet. So, we apologize, we had seven days to turn around the last set of comments and produce these plans, and as a result, most things got in most places, but not everything got everywhere where it needed to be. So, we provided the errata sheet in case there were any lingering concerns after tonight about what plan was accurate and what wasn't, but we accept the staff's approach, which is to defer a building permit to the renderings, so that you can get a sense of what the design intent was by looking at those renderings. And we think that those work in all but one place where we've asked to clarify, which Rob will talk about in his presentation. The only other issue with the proposed staff conditions is that they've asked us to replace cement fiber board, which we have used in order to provide some texture and variety on the more residential streets of the building, which are the Christie and the 64th Street sides, and they've asked us to use instead a metal panel system. We'd like the commission to either allow us to use the originally proposed material to create some additional material variety, or if the commission wants fewer materials on the building, which would be a new comment, frankly, we don't get that very often, that they allow us to use one of the other materials that's already on the building, cement plaster in a different color, or some other way of providing an alternate material. We've enhanced the facade on this building every time we talk to anybody about it, and it still is at its heart a rental building being delivered in the worst economy of our lifetime, and there's only so many games we can play to make the building look better without, you know, collapsing our house of cards. So, we think the materials we proposed are good. Rob will show you some slides of them. If you don't like it, let us use another, let us make a proposal about what other building material to use that is, can be cost-effective in the application shown, and still achieve the design goal, which is to create some variety on the facade of the building. And with that, I would like to introduce Rob Zirkel and then Jeff Miller to present the building in more detail, and obviously, we're here to answer all your questions when the presentation is over. Thanks.
Thank you, Denise.
Good evening again. Hello? I'm happy to be seeing all of you at such an early hour, considering last time. So, with that searing fresh in my memory, I've prepared a presentation to be pretty brief, so we can get to your questions. Just to refresh your memory a little bit, this is an image from the corner of 64th and Christie of the project, as it stood at our previous meeting in August. And essentially, walking through, what Jeff and I are going to do is just focus on the things that we both heard from the commission and the discussion that followed the presentation, and also subsequent discussions with staff and staff's design consultant as well. So, with that, there's really, kind of boils down into sort of six areas. Just sort of going through them quickly, we, there were some comments about the townhomes in terms of how to make those larger, make them a little bit better, a desire to have some more balconies along 63rd and 64th. There was a good bit of discussion about the, the podium exit stair, the width of that stair, the general quality and feeling of it at the pedestrian level that was a point of concern. The idea of the terrace at the recreation room to be expanded a wee bit, so that it had a little more capacity, which sort of goes along with the nature of that stair. And then Jeff is going to talk about how we've used landscape around the perimeter in a slightly different way to kind of enhance the pedestrian experience, and again, closing up with the podium garden as well. So, the townhomes, I think the recipe for success there was pretty simple, and they just, in, in staff's opinion, were a little shallow, and we had room to move them out, so we did. We added a couple of windows that are highlighted in the image on the left of your screen that align with the top of the stairs. So, again, it just allows light to penetrate into those narrow units and, that are a little deep, a little more. And it was easy to accomplish that with how we contracted the depth of that porch, and Jeff will talk a little more about how the landscape proposition of that porch plays into it too, but that was the move on the townhome that we made.
Those are the one-bedroom townhomes?
These are the one-bedroom townhomes along 64th and Christie, between the fitness and the, and the leasing area. The next one, there were, there was a double-height expression at the entries of the ground-floor units along 63rd and 64th that sort of allowed for the possibility to throw a few more balconies in it for the flats that are on the second level here. So, effectively, what we did was we just added a Juliet balcony in those zones to be able to create another balcony zone along those edges as requested. So, there's a net five more balconies in, in the project than there were last time. All the balconies that were here when we met before are, are still there. 64th and Christie, this was, again, this is the image of, of where we were on this corner at the, at the last session. This was one of the kind of more talked-about issues. So, we worked a little overtime with our structural engineer to try to figure out a mechanism that is reasonable and as cost-effective as we can make it, to be able to accomplish what staff and their design consultant had suggested we try, which we feel makes the units better. So, essentially, what you see is that balcony that projects towards 64th now wraps around as a Juliet along Christie, which actually gives you a couple of interesting points in that unit, one, an inhabitable space outside off the corner, and then the ability to open up the operable windows along 64th. So, on those days where it's not a wind tunnel through here, and it's kind of nice, you can, you know, really have a pretty high level of transparency and transmittance at that edge in those units, which we feel, given the position of views, the visibility from the freeway and such, seems like a, a net, a net add. You can also see along Christie, and Jeff is going to talk a little more about this as well, but I think it's just worth pointing out in this image as well, about how we've used landscape and green screens to sort of soften the edge, create divisions between the units at the, at the kind of contracted porch level, provide a little privacy, as we discussed at the pedestrian sidewalk level, through taller plants as opposed to walls, which helps green it up and makes it feel nicer. Jeff will cover that in a little bit more detail. Denise had mentioned before this issue of the, of the siding in the areas between the Bay Popouts along Christie and in two similar places along 64th.
So, for the viewing audience, could you just point to those? Do you have your cursor where those hardy plank areas are?
Yep, I should find it. So, hardy plank is here, and then again, here, and here.
So, six bays or five, five bays?
Across the front, and then there's two bays, one here and one here along 64th. What, what we feel like is, is that there's a lot of plaster on this building. There's a judicious use of metal, which is significantly more expensive. We're trying to use metal in areas that give us the sort of biggest bang for our buck, but be mindful that this is an apartment building, and we need to try to create a material proposition that makes some sense. And so, in lieu of something that's more expensive, like metal in these areas where we're showing hardy, or in lieu of something that's maybe, you know, a little more banal, like just another color of plaster, which we feel like we've already got plenty of in the project, and in considering many buildings in, in Emeryville that combine materials, stucco, metal, glass siding in ways that are pretty nice, we feel like it adds up to a proposition that seems like it fits. It fits here, it fits in the city. And just, just quickly, I mean, just hitting the web, finding a few examples of buildings that are modern, that use these materials in, in kind of a way that we're doing, where we've got plaster, for example, in this, in this project over here, there's plaster, there's metal, there's hardy, there's glass, a little storefront. You know, this is the recipe that we're essentially proposing. We feel, we feel like the mix of materials is actually better than reducing the palette further, which also creates a little more money for us to spend on the skin. So, we think it's both upside in terms of how you experience it as a design, but also more cost-effective at the same time as well. So, on 63rd Street, there were a couple of things that we were asked to consider. This was the image of the project as we saw it last month. The two areas that we were asked to take a look at were the areas of the ground-floor units along here, where we had been showing metal previously, and see if there's a way to work in landscape to be able to soften that edge and create a more kind of symbiotic relationship to the park. And while it's a little concealed from view by these trees, again, there was the issue of the, of the, of the podium exit stair and, and the landscape edge and the terrace. So, as it relates to landscape, this image, and if we flip back and forth here a little bit, it's a, it's a little bit of a Where's Waldo, but you can see that in this edge, we've, we've eliminated the, the metal panel and replaced it with building-sponsored green screens, which is part of a logic of green screen applications at the base of the building, both on Christie and along the street, which we feel like is a net add to the project. Jeff will get into, as I said before, a little more detail about how some of this works, and then what the artistic proposition of some of the landscape and the elements are in the public realm. And as it relates to the podium exit stair, and this is kind of more detailed view of the landscape plan, focusing on this area over here, in the same width of the opening that we had presented last time, we have a, still a 10-foot podium exit stair, but as opposed to having the surface of the podium come out and wrap around to this terrace, we have provided a cascading series of planters, which, you know, effectively add up to a larger opening as you perceive it from the street. It creates a softer edge. We have some lighting, both recessed in that railing wall, down the stair, and also some lighting in the planter that will help that edge at night, certainly. And as it relates to the terrace, we're showing a slightly deeper terrace at 12 feet that will allow a array of, of a few sets of tables and chairs for people to have events that spill outside as well. And again, just the visual connection to the sidewalk, and then also to the park from the space, we think is a good thing. Just one quick note here, too, we had to add a landscape planner to be able to create a buffer from the balcony that we added as well. So, I think at this point, Jeff, step up and take over?
So, just the arrow keys back and forth.
Good evening. Nice to be back. I think that the things that we did learn from the last session really had a lot to do with softening the building, with creating more privacy at the street level, with increasing the variety and amount of plant material that were on our plant list from the last time, that I, I hope you noted, that we wanted to kind of embellish the landscape with pieces of, of landscape art that we think will be important to the feel of the community as you're walking along the sidewalk. And in the podium area, we understood a need to make for a kind of lusher feel. So, we made some changes to that plan as well. This is the overall plan, and I'm going to take you in, into more detail as we go around the building, but you can notice if we're starting on 64th, to the left of the screen, there's a series of, of large landscape boulders that would also be, be incorporated into the planting strip, so we would have kind of a natural boulder effect with, with plants intermingling there. Along Christie, you, you see a series of kind of red indicators which are-
Can you use the cursor to point to these areas? Thank you.
You could help me with how you use your computer.
It would be great to have a mouse, but this, this red thing right here, if you just sort of move around here a little bit, it'll take a second. It'll register on the screen.
So, the boulders are?
The boulders are kind of along that edge there.
Right.
And then coming down here, the, I'm not good with this thing.
You're doing fine.
You could see the, the kind of red indicators there. Oh, where'd it go? Sorry, Rob.
No, no, no. I kind of have the same problem, too. A little bit, there you go.
Sounds like what I have to do at my house. The red indicators are etched concrete or, or stone slabs that would be flush with the pavement in, in the cutouts where pedestrians or people coming out of their cars can get through, either from their car or to their car. There's also a series of standing stones along this edge, or standing columns. They may be, they're, they're going to be further developed, they may relate to- they're they're gonna be further developed. They may relate to the shell mound um uh character of the area, um, and and they will be developed as a as a public art amenity. Um, we have uh added added green screen elements to this this sidewalk all along that you'll see in the blow-up plan. Um, and there's there's green screen around on 63rd Street as well, the the screens that Rob mentioned before. So I'm gonna move ahead to the next slide. Um, so this is at 64th Street. Um, let's see if I can get this to wake up. There we go. Um, well, uh, this this is a cutout at the at the parking garage entry, but here you can see an indicator of of the boulders in the in the green strip there. Uh, also, please note um the green screen um railings that are at the private terraces along there. So this is another way to increase some of the privacy. Um, you can see they they extend up um three and a half feet above the two-foot terrace, so making a um five-and-a-half-foot um green screen um privacy enclosure for those private patios. And here you can see it over on here, the the little red vertical piece.
But they don't have gates.
No, there's no gates there, um, but they're meant to just kind of blur the view um into the space so that um as people walk by, um, they're not looking directly into into the units. Um, this is on the 64th Street um elevation. Um, here you can see as well the increased size of the plant material. Um, again, we're, we are using the um screening material at at the private areas, and there are some green screens that are um mounted on the wall and in three places here. Uh, on the Christie Street um uh promenade here, um, these are the etched um stone placards here, and these are the standing stones uh in the midst of of the of the um plantings along the curbside. And then here you can see how we're using the dotted lines here are the green screen dividers that that kind of align with the uh building columns and would be planted with vines. There's planters on either side that are up on the terrace. And then there are um green screen railings that run all along here. Um, again, to kind of blur the view of somebody walking by and looking directly into that unit there. Um, so this is the Christie Avenue elevation, and there you can see the the green screen pieces that are the vertical pieces um aligning with the building columns. If I could get this darn thing to go. There they are right there. And they then turn the other direction and turn into these lower screens as well. There's another piece of the kind of public art that we're proposing, a a succulent um wall piece here at the entry um near the near the leasing office. Um, this is all the way around on on 63rd Street, up at at the point where the um stair opens up. So as Rob said, there's a, there's a terraced um landscape uh development here, broadening the stair and opening this area up. Um, there's a raised planter that continues south here. Um, and and um this would be in a Corten steel, something like what's shown down here. This is actually at at the end of the building to the right. Um, and then this is a section, again, showing the stair, um, the the sidewalk, the stair, the the green screen panel, kind of railing here, um, higher plantings in front, and um trying to respond to the comments that we heard about privacy.
Could you go back to that slide? So this is sort of a new element for us, but the double doors to the left of the step planter is the terrace above in the recreation room. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then the opening there, the two-stair, that's a unit below?
Right, there's a unit below that.
And they don't, and that door, if there's a door there, that's a buffer uh landscape far left. I know there was a door there on another end.
Right, now that that divides two, two terraces, one from the, one from the next.
I see. So underneath of that balcony is a sliding door or whatever it is.
Right, right, that steps back.
That one-bedroom townhouse or whatever it is.
Let's see, so I'm gonna move along. Um, so here is the 63rd Street elevation. You can see the green screens again at the base of the building. Come on, baby. Here we go. I know it's warming up. I I like that it's a red button, but it's doesn't respond to all this rubbing. I don't know.
Always looking for the arrow.
Yeah. Anyway, you can see the uh the-
See what I can do.
There we go.
There.
Come on.
Magic touch.
Um, so here's, here's the green screen panels. There's three of them, um, climbing up the building. So I I think this is going a a a good distance to helping the feel of of greening um this this whole elevation as well, even though we already have some nice street trees all the way along the street. Um, in the um east-facing portion of the building, um, we've increased the variety of plant material along here. Um, we're considering other other bamboos as suggested in the last um, in the last round. So you'll see in the plant list, there's several bamboos that we're considering, and um they're placed to kind of not obscure windows, but to um kind of accentuate the building. Uh, as well, you'll see that we extended the green screen all the way along the base of the building there. So in the previous version, we had it um in sections where where the garage openings are, but now it continues all the way along at the base. Uh, here's an east elevation. I I kind of want to get you to, uh, did we, did we lose the podium? No, th- this was the embellishments along the sidewalk. So you can see by these photographs, kind of the the effect of green screening um that will happen in these vertical columns uh on the top, a a, an example of um a succulent treatment that we want to use as an, as a piece of art um at the entry, some um examples of standing stones. The one on the right of the screen is a project that we just completed in Oakland. Um, and the etched um stonework down below, um, the one on the right bottom, uh, actually, I just took this picture in Washington DC um yesterday, but um we will be kind of researching um the the history of the area and and probably the the history of the edge of the bay to express it somehow in this in this art element along along the sidewalk. Um, also, we will be using um pavers in the areas where people step out of their cars that are adjacent to these etched concrete pieces. Uh, so the podium garden, um, we talked a lot about um increasing the amount of trees in the garden, and here you can see um we've altered the plan a little bit. We've uh uh increased the planting area adjacent to the um lower units there. There was some concern that we were a little too close um in the pedestrian path. Uh, basically, what we did was we removed one pedestrian path from the whole system. Um, so we've, we've kind of embedded the bocce court inside the green area now. We've offset the trellises from each other, so people coming and going um outside, i- in and out of the the central court area aren't aligned with anybody's door. Um, we still have a nice outdoor kitchen and um community table area, an outdoor fireplace, and the little bars that are are running all the way around the outside are indicators of seats that would be built in to the planter walls that would be kind of welcome seats for people's units. So as they come and go, they can sit down, they could have a pot of uh of potted plants, or they could have uh put their shoes on, or read the paper in the morning, or greet their neighbor. Uh, and um we've also added quite a few trees uh a- a- all around the inside of the project where um want to use Japanese maples as suggested in the, in the last uh round. And you'll also see that i- inside the court area, um, the seating is all on the east side, um, which is, when you look at the shadow studies uh of the project, is the kind of sunnier location uh of the courtyard. So I think it'll be a really nice place to be inside of that um court area. And again, the court can be used for all sorts of things. It it, it's really long enough to be a bocce court, but it could be used for a a large party or gathering. Um, we've also added some palm trees uh around the kitchen, community table, fireplace area. So that, I think, I believe that wraps up, yeah, what what we did. So, thank you.
Could you go back to that slide?
Yes.
Just, I, there're probably gonna be a couple of comments or questions, rather.
Sure.
We're just gonna question. What's the protrusion on the bottom right where it says kitchen counter with sink? It's not on our rendering, but what is that? Is that a, just a s- concrete?
Right, that would be a concrete counter with a sink in it.
Oh, that's a concrete counter.
Right, and it'd have a um, a a kind of barbecue um built into it as well, a hooded barbecue.
Any questions for the landscape?
Yeah, um, the-
Just questions.
Planters along the edge of the uh pad, the courtyard.
Yes.
Are they all 30 inches high?
Uh, they are, but the palm trees uh are in raised um um pieces. There'll, there'll be steel rounds that they, they, so those will be 48 inches up.
Inside, they'll be up higher.
Inside, right. So they'll, they'll be made of metal, and um, so they raise up four more root space for those plants.
Uh, what is the material of the, what, the green screen?
Uh, it's, it's a, it's a metal screen. It it probably, it it either will be the green screen product, which is um a a metal um double, kind of double-walled green screen material, or it may be a simple um grid of um galvanized steel. What we'll try to do is is match um as close as we can what the kind of feel of the building is, um, rather than add some other kind of texture onto the building. Although, hopefully, you're not gonna see the green screen for too long. What you're gonna be seeing is the green.
Mm-huh.
Um, but, you know, sometimes those caged um green screen things look awfully heavy, I I feel, and um I'm not sure why they're double-walled, but I guess it helps the plants climb up a little better.
Depends on the plant you use.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, looking, looking.
I'd just like to make a point of clarification. Uh, Commissioner Flores, I think you asked about the protrusion on the lower right. Um, I think maybe you were referring to that little white uh polygon that's down there?
Yeah, I see in L10, it says kitchen counter with sink, but it points-
That's in the, that's in the middle.
All the way over there into the middle.
Yeah, I think that's just a, I think that's just a wall. It's down there.
The wall. The end of the stairs.
Oh, that thing. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, it didn't show up on L1, and then it showed up on, on this.
Yeah, I was trying to figure that out, too. I s- I s-
Then it, but I done, I thought it was the kitchen counter. I thought, I don't know, I played for it.
Yeah, the counter, sink, and barbecue are in the, are more in the center of the-
I'm sure it's just a column or something like that.
Yeah, it's part of the plan, the problem of a landscape architect trying to figure out where the building walls are.
Yeah, sorry.
And I guess the other question I have is on the new uh 64th Street entrance with the raised uh Corten steel planters going up the stairs. Um, what's the light situation there? I know we're gonna get some uh good south light.
Yeah.
Uh, do you think that's enough, plus on the upside? Because I know there's, you know, there's a roof.
Right. Um, you know, I I I think it's the best lighting situation we have. I mean, um, uh, oh, you're talking about the 64th Street side.
New, a- along the stairs that are-
That's the 63rd Street side.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sigs either.
On 63rd, um, you know, that's all south-facing, so that's the best light we have.
Should be.
Um, I I think, you know, we're gonna drip-irrigate those those terraces, and um I think they should really thrive. That would be one of the more ideal places that we have in the, in the project, I think, um, to grow plant material.
Good.
Steven?
Yeah, quick question.
Yes.
You're relying on green screen quite a bit, and I've used that product, but it takes a long time for it to fill up and mature. How long do you think it's gonna take for it to look like you are showing in the renderings?
Well, I I think, my experience is, it depends on, um, you know, what the plant material is that you grow on on the, on the screen and how aggressive it is. And there's, there's a a bit of a um consideration. You don't want something that's so aggressive that will get so tall that it outgrows the green screen, because we're only going up so high with the screens themselves. But uh, so that becomes a matter of maintenance. Um, I I think within two years, we'll see those green screens covered. Um, you know, I I did another project in Emeryville a few years ago, and it was very interesting. We had a courtyard, um, and it was a courtyard that we had, we grew hardened bergia along a wall, and we grew bamboo in front of it, timber bamboo, and it was kind of a race to see which, which would get to the top of the five-story building first. And the hardened bergia just killed it. I mean, it it went right up the, the um cabling. And eventually, what was interesting, eventually, the bamboo, um, it was timber bamboo, and it grew so large and big that it just really, you never saw the the hardened bergia anymore. But it was, it was a good kind of interim step in that, in that project, because it did fill in quickly while the bamboo was growing, even though the bamboo's a fast-growing plant.
Is that 1500 Park you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's beautiful in there. It's really lush.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, I I like going in there.
Buzz, you have any questions for the landscape part? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I uh, just, can I interject for just one second? There was one thing on a previous slide that I remiss for not mentioning, so I just wanna pull it up quickly. On the, uh, as it relates to the 64th and Christie, I'm not gonna make it full screen, but there were, there's also the addition of these four punched windows that are related to the kitchen and dining area um that were added from the previous iteration, which you can see here. The one thing I want to point out about those is that, and it points this out in the errata sheet that we provided, we have a constructability um kind of detail for these punched recessed windows that achieve a six-inch recess, and we think the most economical way we can do it, this rendering kind of overestimates that. That, all the rest of them in the rendering are correct. That one's shown a little deeper than it should be, because it's actually aligning with the the sliding glass door out to the patio, which it should not have. So just to be clear, those four windows would have a six-inch recess, not the deeper recess that's shown. Okay? Uh, and I I don't, I don't think that Denise has anything to add, so I think we're, I think we're done. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions for the architect or the applicant?
I've got a few.
Sure.
Let's go with Steven.
Uh, sunscreens are shown on some of your elevations, but not reflected on your renderings. You do specify sunscreens for the north elevation, which I think is a bit weird.
The, the sunscreens that we have are represented on, if I can get there, maybe I should just say it right here, on the 63rd, so that they face south. And these were actually on our previous renderings. So this rendering right here, which shows the 63rd Street elevation, which faces predominantly south, this portion of that mass, which faces Christie, which faces south and west, have an an 18-inch shade screen shown from face of glass on those facades, which, you know, are the kind of proper location for those to-
Right, on on eight, 3.3, though, you specify them for the north elevation, but it's not reflected on your rendering. Have you taken them out?
Um, they're in the uh eastern portion of the building, right?
Oh, I hear what you're saying.
Under the barrel vault roof?
Y- y- yeah, it would, it wouldn't be intended. That was one of the inconsistencies noted in this, in the staff report. I don't think we actually discussed that issue, but it doesn't make sense for us to spend money to put shade screens on the north side, so.
So that's an example of where the renderings would take precedence.
Exactly.
Okay, so the renderings don't show sunscreens in certain, certain depictions, but there will be some there?
No.
There, there will only be some on the south and west portions.
Not on the east.
Not on the north, exactly.
And what material is the barrel roof? It says a uh built-up roofing, and I'm not sure what you're referring to on that, on the curb lineage shape.
Bill, do you remember the product name?
Sarnefil.
What was it?
Sarnefil.
Sarnefil. So uh, let me go to an, an image that maybe shows this a little more clearly. Um, here we go. So uh, the, the- So, the intent of the barrel roof is to have a metal panel fascia, an overhang, that tracks the perimeter of it, and we will have an integrated gutter along the lower portions of the roof that defines the break at which the metal fascia then transitions into the sarnafil roof. So, what you would see from the ground is the underside of metal panel fascia and eve. And then from a distance, you'd see that the remainder of the roofing down there is the built-up roof.
Okay, but it's not a metal standing seam.
It is not a metal standing seam roof. The metal panel itself is only at the fascia and the eaves.
It kind of looks like it, it has a reflection from the.
Yeah.
The vertical element onto that barrel, so it kind of looks like it's a reflective material, but it's not in reality?
It's only at the overhangs and the eaves.
But not on the incline.
But not on the expanse of the roof, yeah, exactly.
Okay, you've got a placeholder for photovoltaic panels at the corner of Christie and sixty-fourth street. Low profile, it won't be apparent at that corner?
No, the, in fact, the parapets, and let me go find this. Find that corner. Here we go. So, the parapets actually, in this portion of the project, are actually quite tall. We've actually discussed with staff that those, the masses in those areas where we're currently showing the parapets to be the same height, on the courtyard side, we're actually gonna lower those parapets so that we allow more solar access. But on the street sides, we're gonna maintain those parapets, which are in excess of three feet to six feet. So, we will have them set back from the parapet edge, and they will be low-profile. So, they should be fully concealed from view unless you live in PPV, in which case you'd see them.
Any other alternatives for the, the vertical elements on the balcony? I know the staff had some comments on that as well. What have you looked at for that, for the pickets, the vertical?
I think staff was noting the thickness of the pickets. We like the picketed railings, 'cause they give us the look that we want, they give us the transparency that we want, and we can get a finish on those pickets that are consistent with some of the other metal panel that we're using in the project as well. I think staff pointed it out, just to talk about the thickness of those, of those pickets, which we agree with.
So, we have a condition that.
One inch galvanized or one inch painted?
One inch, one inch painted.
One inch painted metal is what's being proposed.
Okay.
Rails and pickets?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm just a little dismayed that there's no mixed use here. So, you're setting the stage for probably no flexibility down the road when it comes time to consider some mixed-use retail-type tenants for the ground floor, which would energize this project as well as the area. There's a great need, I think, in that area, especially with all the residential that's surrounding the cafe that's proposed today and some of the other things that we see coming down the pike.
In that regard, the PDP allows ground floor uses which activate the street to some extent, that they have access off the street or some sort of interest. In the initial design that we prepared, that's where we had the long shared porch. We were really trying to integrate these units with the street. As the comments have come in, the units are now more distant from the street or more screened with green screens as a choice to improve the livability of the units, but they still do have ground floor units that open onto the street with porches, which activate the street in a way a neighborhood is activated. It's my opinion, as a land use planner, that you cannot put retail on the ground floor of every building in the inner East Bay and have even half of it succeed. And I'm right now leasing the retail at the Marketplace project, which has a lot of retail and a lot of vacant retail. It's very difficult to lease unless it's in a concentrated location. And we, for a time, owned and operated the Emerald Bay Club and Apartments, which is right across the street. There's a deli in the ground floor there, which has been more or less a rent-free tenant for its entire term there and not a very high-quality tenant. And I'm hopeful that the new cafe that's coming in with this new building will set a new tone for retail in this area, but it's not a great retail area. And so, to take it, and it's been largely vacant at Avenue sixty-four since that project was built many years ago. So, the demand for retail is not there today, it hasn't been there for years. It may change as these new buildings come online, we hope it will. But I think if you talk to people who specialize in retail land planning, they wanna gang up the retail into a zone rather than dribble it along. See, intent with this building is to create a residential edge that talks to the residential edge across the street on sixty-four, the Emerald Bay Club and Apartments, and relates to the residential land uses at PPP. And then hopefully brings that finished edge of Christie down through the park and pulls people into what becomes a much more active retail zone, Marketplace, and then, of course, Bay Street. So, within a fifteen-minute walk from this site, you can get to any retail land use you want. You have two regional malls, local unusual retail conglomerate, which is what we have at Marketplace, and then you have a variety of retail uses that are starting to crop up down Christie. That's plenty for the residential population that's there today. In fact, that retail wouldn't succeed if it didn't bring in customers from the entire East Bay to shop there. So, when we went through the conditions of approval on the development plan, we and staff talked a lot about what does it really mean to activate the ground floor? And the development plan does not require retail everywhere on the ground floor in this PDP. It requires land uses that talk to the public street so that there can be a dialogue, if you go between the building and the public realm, that you don't have private gates and private fences up along the edge of the building. You don't put your parking lot on the public street and kill the street in effect. But you can't have retail everywhere and have that retail survive. So, I actually believe that this is fully consistent with the conditions of approval in the PDP and the design intent, and it makes good market sense today for the first building, which really needs to be successful, rather than have vacant retail sitting there for three or four years while we wait for the rest of the market to come to us.
Right, well, I'm thinking services, so if you live here, and this is a pretty dense area.
Steven, I'm gonna stop you for a second. We wanna ask questions, specific questions now, we're gonna open up the public comment, and then we'll come back, and then we'll have more in-depth questions, I guess. That seems like we're getting to.
That's where I was going, I was going with a question, but.
But let's open up the public comment, and then we'll come back to that. Unless there's questions for the actual architect.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the east side of the building, I, I'm gathering that the parking spaces come right up to the planting bed, is that correct? There's no pedestrian walkway along the. I know in the updated general plan, we're trying to avoid having pedestrians walk in the driveways and have their own sidewalks, so that is a concern to me, because I'm assuming visitors to this project are going to be parking there. Is that going to be visitor parking, or what is that slated for?
We have a lot line at the back wall between this entity and the adjacent entity. And the property next to the theater is controlled by the theater currently. As long as they have a leasehold interest, they kind of call the shots about where people park and how they move around through there. So, the only way to provide a sidewalk there for pedestrians would be to eliminate the planter, in which case you wouldn't be able to have the green screen that hides the garage wall, at least right now. Because this is a first building in a redevelopment project over time, eventually it's envisioned that the theater will go, in which case, we will have to come back to you with a final development plan for whatever replaces the theater. And if the commission wants ultimately to have sidewalks on both sides of the street, which I endorse, then you could add a condition of approval that when the next PDP comes in that addresses that edge of this property, which is on another property today controlled by other entities, that that sidewalk be included at that time.
Well, I'd also just like to point out, though, you have, you should have in your packet the drawings of the PUD, they're behind the staff report. And if you look at the first one, it shows the first phase of development, and the United Artists Theater is still there. And this is a parking lot for the United Artists Theater, and it's got a, it's hard to tell a sidewalk from a planter strip in this drawing, but it's actually a planter strip that's shown there, adjacent to that parking. And if you go all the way through all the various phases of this PUD, up to the final phase, phase three, you'll see that some new public streets are proposed, sixty-third and sixty-second, and then another one that goes north-south. But that area to the east of this building always remains a parking lot. It never becomes a public street. And that condition there where you see the ninety-degree parking with that white space behind it is a planter strip, just as it is now throughout this whole PUD. So, that was never envisioned when the city council approved this PUD for that particular location to have a sidewalk.
Well, that was, that was approved before the new general plan was updated, so that might be. That doesn't matter, I guess it's.
Yeah, PUDs are locked in.
Gotcha, all right, well, nonetheless, you get my point, and it would be nice to have a sidewalk there someday. And you heard me, so that's wonderful. Also, what is the grill work material on that same east side between the garage and the, is that, where it's gonna be a green screen, is that just more green screen there, or is it?
You talking to the microphone? Thanks.
I'm so used to being told I talk too loud, it's hard to imagine I need a mic.
It's for the viewers at home.
Gotcha. Let me pull up an image of that real fast, if I can get to it here, here we go. So, the issue is, is that, you know, it's still to be determined, but it's a security issue as well, as much as it's a structure for planting. So, if we deduce that the green screen product isn't robust enough to serve as a secure barrier, it would probably be something that's a little more picketed and fence-like that gives us the security we'd want at that garage. Either way, there's gonna be plants that adorn it.
Yes, so the green screen could be attached to, whatever.
Yeah, exactly.
And on the material choices, I noticed there's this, what looks like in the picture, it says perforated metal mesh, it looks like expanded steel to me that's maybe been galvanized. Is that, I didn't find it anywhere in called-out, is that sort of?
Okay, I mean, that's, that's a good point. So, we had originally envisioned in sixty, at the sixty-fourth corner here, using mesh as the balcony material here, just because there may be a propensity to put stuff out there that might be a little unsightly. Through further discussion with staff, the design consultant, and also just kind of our own desire for consistency there, we opted to stay with metal pickets for the consistency around the building, as opposed to the metal mesh, so it didn't feel so solid. Particularly when it turned into that Romeo and Juliet application across the front, we just kind of felt like that material didn't quite do it. So, it's a bit of a holdover from a previous idea, the intent in the renderings is what we're proposing.
I have a quick question in relation to the hardy board, I guess it's for staff, and I'm wondering why staff chose not to want to have the hardy board?
If I might, there was, over the years that I've been here, and Buzz, I guess, there's been a lot of talk of too much hardy board in town. And there's projects certainly out there that are eighty percent hardy board. We've had one or two commissioners, one that I can think of in particular, said I would never approve a project with hardy board again. And so, I think that's where staff is sort of coming from. I'll let Charlie answer it further, but that was the idea, that, you know, hardy board, and people look at Emeryville and say, you know, that's an Emeryville building and because it's predominantly hardy board.
Right, it was what he said. There are.
For heart.
I mean, the most egregious example is on Dante, which has white, unadorned hardy board panels that are held on with exposed-headed, you know, screws that just looks like unfinished plasterboard and has chipped edges and stuff. Now, that gives, that example gives hardy board a bad name, you know, not all hardy board necessarily looks like that. We did approve some hardy board on Bay Street, the building E Apartments, but it's only in areas that are not prominent, areas that you can't really see that well. There's no hardy board facing Bay Street. It's on the backside that faces the railroad and on other sides of the building. So, just because we kind of felt it was a lot of different materials going on here, and also that hardy board, we know from experience, is kind of a cheap material. Cheap in the sense that it, you know, not high-quality. We felt that some other material ought to be used, at least on these prominent two faces of this building. That's a decision for the commission, you know, it's really a judgment call.
All right. Any more questions, sorry, for the applicant?
One more question.
One more.
Will the palette we see here form the basis for what we see elsewhere in other phases, design guideline-wise?
I think that the, it's hard to say. Each building will have a different land use type. Some buildings, hopefully one day, will support different construction and material types. We have high-rise buildings in this development plan, they aren't gonna be stucco high-rises, nor will they be metal panel high-rises. So, the building materials palette will change depending on the time the building's built and the use of the building and the construction type. That being said, a clean, contemporary aesthetic that is warm and green is a part of the theme that we're, the tone that we're setting with this building. And that tone, the intention of the developer is to continue that tone through every building. There wasn't a condition in the development plan that required a consistent design. It's not intended to look like a development, it's intended to look like a neighborhood. And a neighborhood is a certain amount of organic, you know, buildings look a little different. Their commonality is that we've taken a super block fifteen-acre site, we've broken it down into what feels like city blocks and city streets. We've activated, we've created sidewalks where there are none, and we've activated them and created, you know, pedestrian-oriented land uses at the ground floor of each building so that in twenty-five years, when you walk through the site, you'll feel like you're in a neighborhood where there are buildings that weren't all built by the same development company and the same architect, even though we've enjoyed working with these guys. I can't say they're gonna design every building we do here. So, I think that's the best answer.
Thank you.
I have just a couple of questions, then, last, that it's a little early, there's, you know, just under two hundred units. I assume you have onsite resident manager who lives there?
I don't know that there'll be a onsite resident manager who lives there, but there will be somebody there, probably security, if not the manager. I can't say for sure how we'll manage that. In other buildings we've owned, we've done both. We've had onsite resident managers, and we've also had onsite during-the-day residential managers and then security at night.
Okay, man, a staff version.
Yeah.
I would suggest having an onsite resident manager, but that's just me.
Noted, duly noted.
The question that Charlie, or the comment that Charlie brought up was discussed earlier about the fitness-to-retail idea, and certainly this isn't six thousand square feet of retail, but it would be nice if down the road, if retail came around, and certainly it's a marketing decision that you guys would make, is that the fitness goes up to the recreation, recreation center, and then we have an active use down there. That's certainly up to you, and then we'll see how things turn around as we get cafes popping up around. But I don't like the idea of fitness centers at the ground level, but it's activating the use. You wouldn't be able to rent that space, I know that.
I think if we could rent it, we would. As soon as the market's there and we can rent it, we're there.
Well, we look forward to seeing it come back. I was gonna ask about the back door that goes to the, from the parking lot, from parking garage into the movie theater parking lot, but I assume that's maybe just a fire exit, really? Yeah, 'cause, okay, so I have no more further questions.
One, two other questions, actually, in regards to what you were saying about the perforated metal versus the pickets. Is there any way to, and maybe this is a little premature, but is there any way to have each lease agreement say that the outside of the Juliet, the Juliet balconies, et cetera, et cetera, will be maintained?
We always do that.
Okay.
It becomes a management problem. But that's sort of our, that's our catch-all answer for, people don't always do what they say, and they don't always do what they're told, so.
It's good that it's included, though. And the last thing, is there any other material that you considered besides the hardy board, seeing staff's recommendation?
It comes down to a question of cost and aesthetic and a trade-off. So, we have three materials on the building now, stucco, metal, and hardy board. In order of cost, stucco and hardy are roughly comparable, metal is significantly more expensive. So, we've always played with those materials, and we've tried to use metal as an accent material where we needed a dramatic impact on the building or to enhance the way the building looked. Obviously, the fenestration and the towers and the rest of it contribute to. to the architecture. In rental buildings, that's about all you see. And you don't usually see a lot of storefront glass in a rental building. You can see eighty percent hardy board rental buildings, because it's a very inexpensive and durable material, it's highly waterproof. From, from a developer's standpoint, it has a lot of merits. We did not propose an eighty percent stucco or hardy plank building. We have a building that has a lot of materials on it and a lot of variety, and the hardy, although it is on Christie, is in a recessed part of the building, it's only in the two-story element, it's not all over the face of the building, and it's used on the inset's on sixty-fourth. So, it's a relatively limited application of a low-cost material. It could be colored stucco. And you just wouldn't have the relief in the texture. That's your call.
So, speaking of Dante, we actually looked at board instead of lap siding, which is what's shown. Our feeling is similar to staff, that the board, while it had a certain heyday, is not something we wanna promote. And I just wanna reiterate that with what we've done with metal versus plaster versus hardy, if you look at the percentages, I'm not saying you have parity between metal and, and stucco, but most of the east elevation is metal. Important parts of the more public faces of the building have metal applications. There's relatively expensive metal detailing at this corner that we're seeing on the screen, and some of the eaves and things like that. The hardy that we're proposing catches a nice little shadow line, and we have a nice little reglet detail at the junctions of how that material transitions both at the window head sills and jams, and also where it ties into the plaster on either side of it, that puts a slightly more contemporary spin on using what is an otherwise relatively traditional-looking material, but the texture that you get from the shadow lines in the lap product is a lot different than what you get with the exposed board. So, yeah, we looked at exposed board, but we opted for something that we think is a little bit better, but still maintains the cost efficiency, and it's a pretty minor amount of it, so.
Thank you. No more questions, we're gonna open up the public comment. Anyone like to speak on this, we're gonna give you three minutes to speak on this. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Matt Weber, and I wanted to start by saying that I live a few blocks away from this proposed development. I'm very excited to see what's being presented here. I think it's a nice combination of a lot of different materials. I especially like the increase in, in the landscaping that's been put up there and the green screens. I think that's really kind of a pioneering addition, as well as I've seen some of those succulent plant walls, and, you know, I love to have that in, in my backyard and to be walking past this building. In regards to the, to the lap siding, I actually think that it's a good use for a building that's noted as being green. One of the benefits of the lap siding is it's recycled product, recycled concrete. It's been reformulated and remanufactured, so it's a new product, but it has recycled components, and it does have a long life. So, what you're gonna be seeing, it's, it's a rental building, but it's gonna be looking good for a really long time. And I think that's important for rental buildings, and something in, in my backyard, I wanna see something that's gonna be looking good for a long time. I'd also like to note that I've seen some other projects being done by this developer, and I think they've come out quite nice. So, I would strongly support as presented this building, and thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Could you sign in over there? Thanks.
I'm John Sherman. I think this building's really gonna be an asset to the neighborhood. I live right across the street from this, and I'm really excited to see the old tilt-ups go down and this go up. The, a couple of concerns that I have, primarily, one that I raised before is bike parking, because this is a residence, and this is transit-oriented development, it's built right next to our transit center. Basically, we wanna encourage bicycle use, and I think one of the things that we need to do to encourage bike use is to provide bike lockers. And I think one of the earlier plans had bike, some bike lockers, and they don't seem on the current plan. So, I would like to see those come back, and I think that it's possible to do something pretty easy. In PPP, we use these web wedge-shaped lockers, and they can squeeze, squeeze them in in a lot of different places, so I would encourage those. I think it would be really possible to work in this corner, if you really got rid of these two parking spaces. I think you could use this whole corner and put your bike storage there, and use quite a few bike lockers. One of those parking spaces could actually come back over in this area. And the second thing I wanna raise is the AC transit. There are two buses that stop there, there's the thirty-one that stops, and then there's the TransBay that stops there, the J bus, that comes in, and it's a boatload of people basically coming back from the city every night. And whatever landscaping is done on Christie, I think really needs to accommodate those two buses in that area. But other than that, I think this is a great project.
The bike storage that you're talking about, John, you can stop the clock for him. There's, so you're pointing out the eighty-two that are at the bottom of the parking garage, but then at the, at the first level, I guess at ground level, there's a hundred and twelve still shown.
Right.
And are you suggesting that those, that there should be more, even more than that?
Not necessarily more bike parking spaces.
Bike storage.
But there should be individual bike lockers, and I think that's really key to, to being successful.
But with, but within the bike storage areas that are there now?
Well, I, I don't know that they'll fit in there, so a possible.
What about the larger hundred and twelve?
I think it's kinda the same thing. It's, it's possible. In this particular bike rack or bike storage takes up a very small amount of space, and you can see how you can configure them in different ways to really use the space very wisely. But I guess, if there were not space in either of those rooms to accommodate the bike lockers, what I would prefer to see is give up one or two of these parking spaces. That would open up this whole corner for bike storage, so you could use more individual bike lockers in there. And if you did that, if you just got rid of these two parking spaces, that really opens up this whole corner, you could actually bring back one of your, one, possibly two of your parking spaces in this area. So, I think there's some trade-offs you could do with the space, that could use it a little bit more efficiently and accomplish the bike, individual bike lockers.
Well, since you're a neighbor, I would suggest you talk to the applicant, share your views with them, and maybe you could come up with a solution. A hundred and ninety-four spaces seems like, or bike storage units with the, you have bike parking also up on the ground level outside, is a lot. But I know you're, you speak for the bikes, you're the Lorax of the bikes, so I'm not gonna question you.
Yeah, and it's really, it's, again, it's really not having, I'm really delighted to see the number of bike parking spaces that there are, but as a practical matter, I don't park my bike on the parking racks in PPP.
Right.
I mean, I've got my helmet and my, all the other stuff.
I've seen those bike racks on PPP, they're crazy.
But, but I do have a bike locker that, that's just as convenient. It's as easy for me to walk to my bike locker and get my bike, as it's to get in my car. So, I think that really encourages the bike usage.
Yeah, I would share that stuff with them. It sounds like maximizing the bike storage is a great idea, and they might be looking for ideas. Thanks, John.
I would just note that if, if the applicant wants to make that change, I would suggest that's something we could approve at a staff level. It's a minor change.
Okay.
And they have more parking than they need, so.
Yeah.
Losing a couple of parking spaces is not gonna affect anything.
If any, if nobody has any objection to that.
Well, I live at Watergate, and we have bike storage rooms similar to these.
I'm gonna.
And they work fine.
Yeah, I'm gonna close the, well, is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Seeing none, okay, now we'll bring it back. But go ahead, we'll finish, finish your thought.
At Watergate, we have the same rooms that hold eighty bikes, something like that, in each building, and they work fine. You can lock your bike to the rack within the storage room, and you have a special key.
Sure.
That you have to put a deposit on to get into.
Sure. That's the same situation they have at PPP.
Uh.
No?
They don't, they're outside.
I, I really agree with John in that the, having a locked space for your bike, because there's all kinds of things that you put on your bike that are really easy to take off, and if they're not locked away, for instance, you might even wanna leave your helmet down there and have it all in one place. And I wouldn't, I don't feel comfortable leaving my bike exposed, you know, there's lights and panniers and all kinds, you know, seats.
Sure.
And just having single lockers would make the experience better for the, for the bicyclist, for sure. So, I would, I would really strongly support having individual lockers.
In all of the bike storage areas, or just in?
At least for, I'd say half to, to three-quarters of them, yes. I mean, there's, there's, there'll be folks that just have their weekend bikes and whatever, but there's, they'll be commuters, and that's what we're trying to encourage in this project.
Maybe staff can work on something that we can talk about at the end if the question comes up. I really wanna go back to Stephen, 'cause he was talking about the retail, and I cut him off, and now I wanted to finish his thoughts.
Now, my only concern was that you've got some density here, and for instance, the gentleman who spoke was, was a resident of the neighborhood, you can't walk to a place and get dry cleaning. You've gotta get in your car. And we're trying to promote pedestrian lifestyle here, and just the basic service amenities that this area is lacking could be accommodated easily in this project.
Well, there's dry cleaning, right?
There's a dry cleaning in PPP.
Big parking plaza, right across the street.
I mean, as a, as an example.
As an example, right.
So.
Well, I know, if we're talking about retail real quick, I, I, I mean, I, the market as it is now, there is nothing for retail. That doesn't mean you can't build it and make it come, but right now I don't see it even coming. And, but with this three-phased PUD finishing out, certainly there's gonna be a lot of retail, and I think the, the, not behind closed doors, but the discussion with the, the developer, the PUD, the staff, and city council has been, well, the market now is we need rental residential. We need it, I think we need it now. The vacancy rates are really low.
No, that's not.
And there's a need, people need to rent. And, and in next year, in the next two years, nothing's being built right now. If this project starts in six months, it would be the first residential rental, private, well, there's some public money obviously involved, project that had started in the, in the Bay Area. One of the first. Not many going on, zero units in Oakland built last year. Not many here in Emeryville finished. So, there's a need in the next year or two. So, not a need for, for commercial, and so I kinda support that there's no commercial here. This was to be a taller building with, and that six thousand kinda took up the bottom floor, and no underground parking, so there's been this big trade-off of getting underground parking. So, anyway, I don't wanna go against what you, I, I know how you feel. We used to talk about commercial here three or four years ago, we wanted it, we want the activation, and Jim Martin was always pushing it, and it made, totally made sense, you know, you wanted.
Mixed use is, is key.
Mixed use, we love mixed use.
It's key, yeah.
But I think, I think the project, once all the phases are built out, it will be mixed use, and if we get the, the population up, there'll be more you, need for services, et cetera.
And the park and everything else. Any more comments, talk about this project, putting it out there? Everybody like this thing?
I, I thought, I thought that you all really listened, and there was some thoughtful, thorough going through of, of the project. I actually kind of like the hardy board. Uh-oh, I'm gonna be in trouble.
Don't worry, you're not alone.
The courtyard's much improved, the green screens, they, I think are gonna give it a good feeling for the pedestrian, and I, I'm very in favor of this project.
I'd like to move that we approve it with the developer's proposal, which was hardy board.
So, I just have a few comments, we have a motion on the table. First of all, good job, planning commissioner, our first big project that we're really working on, and we've had a lot of recusals and everything. So, I've really appreciated the two new commissioners' comments, they've added a lot to this project. We don't get large projects that come in and get scrutinized three times. Usually, it's a study session, and then we, we go to approval, especially, especially if it's going to council, because usually, you know, that's where the final decision is made, and so that's where they're singing and dancing a little bit more, we just get the previews. But the, so commending the, the developer too about coming in and really listening to us, and even though on a tight deadline have come back twice, and now three times, to give us what we'd like and give the community what we'd like. That's a project of this size, and only having a couple of comments, which are both positive comments from the community, is, you know, telltale to that. So, I had a lot of notes here, but I, I won't get into them, because it's a handsome building that looks industrial with all the metal and the glazing. It is seen from the freeway. I don't like the comment when people point and say that looks like an Emeryville project. I think this has gone away from that with the bulkhead roof and all the metal and all the glass. So, thank you for putting the time and the money and the design into this important project that you can see. I, the hardy plank is, the, it seems to me, looking at it, it's the, the least-used siding, you know, there's a lot of metal. And just kinda going through it, it looked like it was about a, you know, forty percent stucco, forty percent metal, and twenty percent hardy with some concrete. It, you know, a lot of concrete in there from the podium and everything, maybe a little less than that even. With the hardy, you can paint it pretty easily, a lot easier to paint it than the stucco, which you have to put two or three parts on. So, if you wanted to change it, 'cause it fades fast, you can paint it pretty fast, and then it changes the look of the building. So, I agree, I'm not, and, and then, great comment from the community that it's a recycled product too, so it does add to the green.
I just wanna say, I, I don't necessarily like hardy board in general, but on this project, I like.
Okay. That's fine, you can carry the gauntlet. So, I think that's, it seems to be a moot point, and so, we're happy, it seems, well, you made the motion.
To approve it with the hardy.
With the hardy.
Now, are there other items that we need to clarify?
You've, you've gotta clarify the height when you make this motion, don't you?
Uh, no, the, the conditions of approval that we've put on the dais for you have corrected the height.
Okay.
So, previously it said a maximum of sixty-five feet, now it says a maximum of sixty-eight feet.
And it's sixty-seven, seven?
Sixty-seven, seven.
Okay.
So, they've got five inches of wiggle room.
Excellent.
So, there's a motion on the table, anybody like to second that?
I'll second it.
A motion, and it's seconded by Steinberg to move approval to city council.
Before you vote, did you want to address the issue of the bicycle parking?
Oh, yes.
Um, yes. Well, you've mentioned that, that, you know, that staff could, could work, and, and I'd actually like you to work with the member of the community that spoke here a minute ago, I think, is the name was Sherman, about using, and, and it sounds like about, you know, two, about a half of the bicycle storage, maybe.
I would suggest, just to make it crystal clear.
Mm-hmm.
That condition on, where did it go? On page fifteen of what's on, in front of you, it's about three-quarters of the way down the page, the bicycle parking requirement, says one hundred and ninety resident bicycle parking spaces, that the one ninety comes from one space per unit, they're proposing a hundred and ninety-four, but the one ninety would be the requirement. So, that we just add to that sentence, of which at least ninety-five shall be lockers. That makes half lockers.
Is that something?
Before Denise speaks, would the addition of lockers reduce the amount of park, of bicycle parking for those two areas, and if they do?
Well, you'd have to enlarge the room, the bicycle parking.
You have to enlarge the room.
Right.
So, that will get to Denise.
But I would note.
Because we can't reduce the amount of, we want one per, because that adds to your award.
I would note that the, they're proposing one parking space, one vehicle parking space per unit, which would be a hundred and ninety, and they actually have two hundred, so they could lose a couple of car parking spaces, it wouldn't really impact the project.
All right, we'll let Denise.
I would be willing to study what John has suggested, which is flipping this, perhaps over into the corner, rearranging this area of the garage, but my understanding, and again, we haven't studied this, my understanding of the storage lockers is that they're, less than half is efficient than, as the bike parking. So, you would need more than twice as much space to accommodate, and so it wouldn't just be losing two stalls. You, you could lose so many stalls that we couldn't adequately park the building. So, my suggestion would be rather than require half, without really having studied it, that you direct me to provide some bike storage lockers in this zone of the building, let me study it and work it out with staff, and I'll talk to John. I just don't wanna have a numeric requirement. requirement that, right now, I'm afraid I couldn't meet without jeopardizing the parking in the building, and I can't really answer the question.
Maybe make it as much as possible.
Yeah, I understand the goal.
With, how about if we rephrase that to say, 190 resident parking spaces in enclosed, limited access area with as many as feasible being lockers?
That's great. Works.
That's making an effort. Thank you, Denise. So, we have a motion by Cardoza, seconded by Steinberg.
And I would just also note for the record that as a result of Commissioner Cardoza's motion, if you approve it, we would eliminate, uh, condition, yeah, thanks, condition 7A1B on page 16, which requires that the composite siding be replaced with metal. So, that condition would go away, and the following conditions would all be relettered accordingly. Okay? So, those two changes to the conditions, then.
Agreed.
Right?
Okay.
All right, ready?
Call a question.
Uh, let's see. Commissioner Coomerly.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberg.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cardoza.
Aye.
Chair Flores.
Aye.
Four ayes, the motion is approved. We will forward your recommendation to the city council that this FDP be approved.
Thank you.
And by the way, it will be October 19th.
October 19th.
The October 19th city council meeting.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Everyone's coming back together. Get myself straightened out here. All right, we are at, as soon as we get everyone seated here, welcome back.
Thank you.
Too bad we couldn't hear from you on the landscaping. It's a terrible rule. We are at commissioner comments. Anybody have any commissioner comments? I, I want to add to the end of my statement on the last project. You guys are doing great, and it's, it's, I, we miss Patty and, and Jim a lot, but it's really great to have you both here. You're adding so much to this, this commission, so just thank you so much. And that is all for commissioning here, here. That's it? We're going to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Good job, Eaton. Really good timing.